18 Casimir Street, Andover, Mass. 01810. The property which is the subject of this case is located at 318, 390 and 400 Howard Street, Lunenburg, Mass. 01462, known as the Pondview Commons, assessing six, seventeen and seventeen parcel, twenty-four, twenty and thirty-four respectively. The applicant is seeking 40B approval for a comprehensive permit for the purpose of developing 200 unit apartments, community at 318, 390 and 400 Howard Street in Lunenburg, Mass. The zoning board of appeals would consider authorizing the comprehensive permit 40B. And with that, I'll ask you, Jim, to read in the correspondence we just got in.
This is a memorandum to the zoning board of appeals from the Lunenburg Sewer Commission dated September 14th, 2022, with copies to Adam Costa, Town Council, and Heather LeMure, Town Manager, re- Pondview Commons Comprehensive Permit Application. The Lunenburg Sewer Commission appreciates the opportunity to provide input regarding the proposed Pondview Commons project. First and foremost, this project is located outside the sewer service area, and the applicant is requesting a waiver. As stated in the legislation establishing the sewer service area and the sewer bylaw, a vote at town meeting is required to expand the SSA. The sewer commission questions the authority of the ZBA to waive this requirement. Town meeting authorization is a directive imposed by the legislature via Chapter 185 of the Acts of 2010. The Supreme Judicial Court remarked in the zoning board of appeals of Groton versus Housing Appeals Committee that, in some circumstances, compliance with locally imposed barriers may need to yield to the regional need of affordable housing. But this legislative judgment cannot be stretched to empower the ZBA to act as the legislative body of a municipality. Secondly, it is imperative to keep in mind that the cost of maintaining and operating the Lunenburg Sewer Department is borne by approximately 922 Lunenburg residents and is completely funded by an enterprise fund. Sewer fees cover the cost of payments to Lemonster and Fitchburg, maintenance of pump stations, sewer lines, and the running of the sewer department. The application contains an inaccurate representation of the construction and permit fees for a sewer line to serve this project as outlined on the attached. In the event that sewer fees are waived by the zoning board of appeals, there is a significant possibility that the enterprise fund would become insolvent. The sewer commission is adamant that this project must not place unfair burden on our current and future sewer uses that are in the current and sanctioned sewer service area. The committee, or commission, has reviewed the comprehensive permit application and has several initial concerns. Please see attached. Once the proposed sewer system is designed, the commission looks forward to providing feedback to the ZBA. See attachment. And we'll wait for the attachment for further comments as this progresses. Thank you.
Thank you, James. And with that, I would ask Adam if he would go over the 40B, the comprehensive permit, so that you understand what we're looking at.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to be with you tonight. So I'm Adam Costa. I'm with the firm of Mead, Teller, and Costa. Many of you may have seen me at town meetings. I've been to town council. My firm has been to the town for a number of years now. We're here tonight to discuss a Chapter 40B application. Chapter 40B is a state's affordable housing law. It was adopted back in the late 1960s, so it's been in the books for quite some time. Chapter 40B allows applicants to make applications to zoning boards of appeals in cities and towns in Massachusetts for affordable housing projects, projects that may be market rate to some extent, but that include an affordability component. What it allows is applicants to seek waivers from otherwise applicable bylaws, rules, regulations, whether they be zoning or general bylaws, rules, regulations, policies of the different boards and commissions and committees of the town. It is similar in many respects to other reviews that a zoning board of appeals might provide, but it is different in other respects. So similarities, for example, include the process that's underway here tonight, a public hearing process where shortly you'll hear the applicant make a presentation about its project. There will be an opportunity for questions from board members, and then subsequently an opportunity for public comment, and the board will deliberate on the application. And at the end of the process, we'll be required to issue a decision, either approving or denying the project. So that's a similarity in terms of how the process unfolds. It's not a whole lot different than a special permit application or a variance application that might be made to your zoning board of appeals. In other respects, it's a very different process because, as the terminology suggests, by virtue of it being a single comprehensive permit, the responsibility on this zoning board of appeals is quite different than in the context of a special permit or a variance. This board in Lunenburg will sit as the sole permitting authority for all local permits and approvals. So what that means is other permits and approvals that might typically be issued by, say, a planning board, say, a sewer commission, would be issued, will be issued, if this board sees fit to do so, by the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board does not act under state law, so to the extent there are state permits and approvals that are required, even if those state permits and approvals are issued by local boards or commissions or committees, those processes will still need to be undertaken by the applicant. But as far as local bylaws go, local general and zoning bylaws, rules and regulations of your various boards and commissions and committees, this is one-stop shopping. That's how it's referred to in the comprehensive permit law. And so this will be a comprehensive process. This will certainly not be a process that is completed in one evening. Sometimes we're talking a couple of meetings. Sometimes we're talking, I think my record's about two and a half years. So it just depends upon the complexity of the project. It depends upon the number of questions that arise through the review process. But there are often multiple opportunities for public input, and there are various different reviews that a board will perform on its own and through the use of consultants to ensure that the town will be protected if the project is approved. And again, it may ultimately be that the board chooses not to approve the project. I'm not going to get too deep into the law tonight relative to the legal standard that needs to be applied. I've had an opportunity to meet with the chair of the board and to discuss generally the process. He's familiar with it. It's not the first 40B application that's been made in the town of Lunenburg. The legal standard is somewhat different than it would be for a special permit or a variance. It's a more stringent standard for the board to choose to deny a project of this sort. But with that said, that's a general, very basic overview of the comprehensive permit process. I'm going to be here throughout the process. I'm going to be assisting the board, and I have more to say specifically about this application, but I'm not going to do that at this stage in the process because I'm sure that you all came not to hear me speak, but to hear the applicant speak and to maybe say a few words of your own. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, I will invite the applicant to address the comprehensive permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You'll have to come up to the mic and give your name and address and say whatever you would like.
Did you say, "Say whatever I want"?
Well.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, neighbors and residents who came out to hear us tonight. I appreciate everybody's time. My name is Don Bornstein. I'm an attorney. I'm the project attorney. I'm with the firm of Johnson &amp; Bornstein. We're located at 12 Chestnut Street in Andover. I've been involved in many 40Bs over the years and have been involved with Attorney Costa on several of those as well. I'd like to briefly introduce the project team and then also give you just a real snapshot of what it is we're doing here, general understanding of it, and then I'm going to quickly turn it over to our project engineer, who will bring you through in a little more detail for tonight. The project team, in addition to myself, consists of the project principal, Kevin O'Brien. Kevin's with us tonight. Kevin is the principal of Pondview Commons LLC. They're the applicant of the 40B application before you tonight. Also with us tonight is Wes Fleese. He's a professional engineer, civil engineer. He's with Haley &amp; Ward. Wes is with us tonight, and I know he's done a fair amount of work in the town of Lunenburg over the years. Also on the project team, but not with us tonight, is Chester Bartels. Chester is an accomplished architect. He's with STEAM Collaborative. He's provided the fairly extensive preliminary architectural plans that are in your package. And again, my name is Don Bornstein, the project attorney. The project site, and I'll point out some of the boards we put up for us to look at. The project site consists of 18 and a half acres. It's a portion of what's previously approved by the town's planning board of the Arrow Estates subdivisions. So Arrow Estates subdivisions, there are several of them. This is the entirety of that Arrow Estates parcel. Our project site for the 40B is in this little corner right here, 18 and a half acres total. Gave you this board. It is Board A52 in your 200-page or so package. It's A52. Gives you an overview of this entire Arrow Estates project site and then shows you the 40B project here in the corner. It has access over, is proposed to have access, over the approved subdivision roads that bring you out to Howard Street. Howard Street is across the very bottom of this board right here. We're in the vicinity of 318 Howard Street. 318 actually sits right here, just off the project accessway. The project itself, you'll see on this board, it's a close-up of the small area that I just showed you on the overview. The project itself is a large project, 200 units proposed, all rentals. Under 40B, 25% of those are set aside for moderate income housing, affordable to folks between 70 and 80% of the local median income. We have a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units proposed in that 200 units, and you'll see there's three mid-rise buildings that are part of that project. Those buildings are roughly equal in size. They're approximately 82,000 square feet each. We're not going to get into the details of the architectural tonight. I'm sure we will as we move forward with this process. Project of this nature, as Attorney Costa indicated, generally requires at least a few meetings to get through the details that I'm sure the board will be interested in hearing about. The project as a 40B project also is a limited dividend situation, so that's part of what qualifies us to come before you with a 40B project. 25% of the project is set aside for moderate income housing. Profit is limited to 20%, and amounts above that actually are due back to the town for use in the town's other affordable housing interests and needs. That's part of what's required under the 40B process. This project is actually now a year and a half, two years into a fairly significant design and planning phase. So this project, some time ago, was submitted to Mass Housing after initial design and review, was submitted to Mass Housing for site eligibility approval. That site eligibility approval was issued this spring, and then since then, we've been completing our materials, putting together the large package you have for you, so you'd see the project that you have before you today. The project design and the focus of the design was to provide efficient and comfortable rental housing in these three buildings, but also to take advantage of the natural setting and the views that this site provides. There's a many outdoor amenities. We're not going to get into them in detail tonight, but there's both passive and open recreation space. We have, again, 18 and a half acres for our 200 units. It's actually by 40B standards, a very non-dense project. Compact buildings, but a fairly large site with a lot of open space included in the 40B site itself and with amenities directed at a lot of that outdoor space. Our project site has just under 30% site coverage because of that. We have a proposed four-year phased build-out that's in your materials, and I'd just like to cover a little bit of the process that's arrived here. Again, we have our project eligibility from Mass Housing. We have a letter of financial interest from the Lowell Five Bank, who we look to finance the project through what's called the New England Fund, which is a subsidized housing fund that can support projects of this nature and provide for the development of affordable housing. All those things combined and in your package is what qualifies us to be before you for a comprehensive permit project under 40B and because the town has not attained its 10% affordable housing percentage required on the state's affordable housing inventory. So with that and those facts and figures, I'm going to turn it over to Wes Fleese, and if you'd entertain us for a few more minutes, we're going to go through and give you a little more detail on the projects and some of the nuts and bolts from a civil engineering standpoint.
Wesley Fliss, Haley Ward, formerly Whitman &amp; Meagam Associates. As Mr. Bornstein stated, I'll give you a quick overview of the site plan that was presented in the application. At this state, we are in a preliminary site plan state, so some of the information I know, as we move along with the board, we will provide that information at a later date. As Mr. Bornstein stated, this is, the entirety of the property here is part of the 10 Arrow Estate projects that were previously approved by the planning board. The 40B project here is part of Arrow Estates 1 and Arrow Estates 7. The project will utilize the roadway system that was proposed as part of that, really Arrow Estates 1, and then Arrow Estates 7 kind of lays in this area here, and that will use the roadway network that was proposed as part of the Arrow Estates subdivisions that was approved by the planning board. We will have interior driveways that will come off of the roadways to service the units, but the main roadways will be public roadways as part of those Arrow Estates subdivisions. There are two parcels that make up this project. Parcel, we call it 40B 1, which is here, which is about eight and a half acres, and then 40B 2, which is about 10 acres, little over 10 acres. As Mr. Bornstein said, we're about eight and a half acres, where the entirety of the project, the property, was around 193 acres that made up the 10 subdivisions. And so we're looking at about 18 and a half acres that encompass this project. As Mr. Bornstein stated, there's three buildings. The footprint of the three buildings, each building's around 21,000 square feet. Each building will be serviced by 134 spaces. That equates about two parking spaces per unit. I think we're overparked by two spaces because we're at 200 spaces, 200 units, and we need 400 spaces total. So we're a little overparked for the two spaces, but we're trying to meet what has been done previously in front of the ZBA and on some of the other 40B projects. Utility-wise, we will use some of the infrastructure with regards to the stormwater that was proposed before in the roadways here, where the stormwater previously was designed to come out in this location here. There are some stormwater basins that were approved by the planning board here. This part of the project will create a new stormwater basin, which we'll put in this location here, and that was in part of the application that came in front of the board. We did show some utilities on one of the plans that was presented to the board in the application that you have in front of you. Excuse me. So utilities with regards to municipal utilities, we are proposing to bring municipal utilities up into the site with regards to municipal water, municipal sewer. I know you read in that letter regards to the municipal sewer, and so we will continue to work with those departments also as part of this process as we move ahead. As Mr. Bornstein stated, we are trying to create a fair amount of green space on the outskirts of the project here. We do show some passive recreational areas throughout here. Really, you know, we're looking at probably a couple acres of just green space in this location here, some walking trails between the units, and similar here, where we'll look at, you know, doing some walking trails out back here in the back of those units there, too, to have some passive recreational activities there also. The underlying zoning out here is the outlying zoning district is the underlying zoning, but again, we are under the 40B application process, and so that, those are part of the waivers that we requested. That's part of this application. In the application, in the back portion of the application, A69 through A71, we do list all the waivers that we intend to request. There may be waivers that are added or subtracted as part of this process as we move forward with the different department head comments and also the peer review, and we will, you know, work with that list to make sure that we update that list as we move forward. Couple things to note that we will also work with. There are some wetlands in the back here that was part of the subdivisions that were approved prior with the boards, and so we will work with the Conservation Commission also for approval through the Conservation Commission with work within the 100-foot buffer zone to those wetlands there. But the majority of the project is outside of the jurisdiction of the conservation. There's just a small portion there in the back here that will have to associate with this building here and also associated with the stormwater for that building. We already have approval for the basins here, so we won't need any further approval for those basins, but that, this project here will tie into that infrastructure that's already been approved for in the past. We will not talk about the traffic tonight. I know we do have a traffic report for the project. We will obviously take any questions that the board has and bring that to the traffic engineers and any of the questions that the butters have, obviously, with the traffic. But as Mr. Bornstein stated, we intend, obviously, to have multiple meetings on this, and one of those items that we want to address at a separate meeting is traffic. But like I said, we will take any of the comments of the board or their butters have tonight for traffic, but we don't intend to necessarily answer any questions with regards to the traffic tonight. We will take any concurrence in tonight and then have the traffic engineer prepare for a meeting at a separate date to have those conversations with the board and the butters for traffic. But again, we want to give you kind of the overview of the project and really get a lot of the questions that the board may have out on the table and the butters may have out on the table. So at this point, Don, go on to you.
So, Mr. Chair, we're actually going to conclude our, basically, our opening remarks on the project here. We're very excited tonight to get some input from the board, to get some initial questions lined up, to hear from the folks who've come out interested in the project. We're very interested to hear their input and their concerns, and we'd like to turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, at this point. And then I think before the end of the night, we'd like to talk a little bit about process and procedure going forward after tonight.
Okay. That's good. All right. As far as traffic, since you mentioned it, I want to make sure for that meeting that we know ahead of time when that's going to be, so that we can let everybody know, you know, what meeting that's going to be at. So I'd like to know that ahead of time before the meeting and so that everybody can know because that is going to be one of the big issues, and we're definitely going to have a traffic study. So I just wanted to point that out. One, a couple of questions is, when you talked about the driveway going into that, is that only to the 40B? Is the 40B only using that one entrance and the separate entrances for all that other project?
No. So the roadway network for the entirety of this 10 Arrow Estates subdivisions, there is a loop portion of the road that kind of comes through here, and then an also comes up in this area location. So those will be public right-of-ways, and then the driveways into each complex will be here and into here and then in here. So that will be private in here, but those outside streets are going to be public ways.
Okay.
And those are approved already under the subdivision control that was done before. So we're just intending to use the roads that were already approved as part of Arrow Estates 1 and then Arrow Estates 7.
Okay. Thank you. And also, just on the design, a quick point, I'm just, you know, it's a four-story side, so you need a waiver from the 38-foot height restriction. I'm just wondering why four stories high? I don't believe there's another four-story building in this town. I'm just curious why it was designed that way.
Well, I believe the Whalen Park complex does have a four-story building. It's three stories of units on top of a parking garage. Those are four stories.
I'll look at that. I didn't bother with it. Okay. But I'm just still wondering why four stories?
I'll give my best architect's impression right now because I've been familiar with the design process throughout the last year and a half, two years. I think the height of the building, one, it's common to rental communities like this. You see buildings of this nature, a fairly common way to develop rental housing of these types of communities. And second, it gives us a lot more space on the site to work with. So we have, you know, part of the design theme was always to provide a lot of open space and to have compact living that was both efficient and expensive and yet high quality, and be able to do that in an efficient envelope for that building. So that's why those buildings are proposed at a four-story height, because it allows us to do all those things. It allows us to make some of those design details happen easier when it's at a four-story height. And I suspect we'll get into a little bit deeper dive, not tonight, but at another night. We'll get into a deeper design on design, how the units lay out, the amenities of the units, both interior and exterior, and there's a lot to talk about in the design, and we're going to be happy to do that in more detail.
Okay. And I just have one more comment based on just what I heard tonight. If you don't get municipal water and sewer, do you have a Plan B?
Yes. Appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee is our short on our Plan B. And I hear the memo that was read at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the meeting. I won't get into the details of it tonight on that either, but, I mean, suffice it to say that I think we disagree with the sewer commission's interpretation that this board does not have authority to allow for the relief that we're asking of the board in our application. We believe strongly in that, but we're going to be happy to explain it, and I suspect the board's attorney and I will have future discussions on those topics. will have future discussions on those topics.
Okay.
We want the board to know what we know about what authority we think this board has to deal with things like municipal water and municipal sewer, both key, critical aspects of this project, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll open it up to the rest of the board to ask any questions they may have. Gentlemen?
I don't have any questions about what was presented tonight. I will have questions later on, as I have read everything a couple times. And there will be several questions in the future, thank you.
I share Jim's sentiment, but I do want to ask a couple of questions, just maybe for the history for folks in the, and for myself and for folks in the audience. So you have a subdivision, I think one hundred and ninety-three acres, right? Arrow Estates one through ten, what does that comprise? That's, that was a subdivision that was approved by the planning board? And now you're carving eighteen acres out of that to do your forty-B?
That's roughly an accurate description, yes, yes.
And I'm just going to be, I have further questions, but I want to be brief. So you're working on the sewer and you're working on the water. Do we know how long that is, that line? Like, how far do you have to go to the connection from wherever you are to the site?
We do. We've done an extensive survey of that run. We're not coming into this process blind. We, of course, have not completed final design of those things because that, of course, requires close coordination with both Water District and Sewer Commission. But I can get you some distances. I'm sure Kevin knows them.
Three miles.
I'll just repeat it for the microphone. Three miles is what Kevin said.
And then we'll have a traffic report, but it's not tonight?
Yes, we have a traffic report, and we will be submitting that to the board, and we expect that to get review.
I have more questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, my questions are also for a little bit on the history. The Arrow Estates, how many units was that, is that, was that planned to be?
It's approved one hundred and twenty-two building lots.
Okay, and that was with two egress, that was with just two egresses?
Yes.
Where is the second, where was the second egress again?
I can give you the rough location. I think Wes had noted it, but it's down on this portion of the site.
Okay, is there a reason why those roads are not specified on this site, and will that be done at the same time? So will they, once Arrow Estates is complete, will there be, will, once these fortyBs are complete, will there be two egresses on that property? For emergency purposes?
Sure, we're proposing the forty-B to stand on its own as you see it here. We've explained the greater context it falls into in this larger parcel, but this project is brought by Pondview Estates comprised of this project site.
So Pondview Estates only has one egress?
Correct.
A single egress?
Yes, this project relies on this egress.
So what, what, okay, all right. And then my, how many, out of those one hundred and twenty-two units, how many units have been subtracted to put this property on there? Nineteen, so we're still looking at another hundred and, hundred-plus units, hundred and three, hundred and four?
Just, yes, just over a hundred, yeah.
Just over a hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'll wait for my, rest of my questions during that process.
Sure.
Gentlemen, Patrick, Don?
I just had one really quick question. Has any of the other subdivisions up till, up until this point been, or any of those started, or?
No.
No, okay, none, okay. So, thank you.
No questions? No questions, okay, very good. Do you have anything yet you would like to?
Not at the present time. I mean, I do think, and I guess I want to say this before, Mr. Chairman, you open it to the public, because I'm sure that there are comments on all sorts of different topics from utilities, water, sewer, to traffic, to density, and as there often are. As we move through the meeting tonight, and the applicants' counsel had referred to process and procedure, having that discussion as we conclude and talking about things like peer reviews, I presume that board members have, and I don't know whether it's part of your binders or not, but as part of the forty-B process, before an application is made to the zoning board of appeals, there's an application made by the applicant here to Mass Housing, to the project subsidy. And the town was put on notice about a year ago or so that that application had been made, and there was a comment period during which time the town and its various boards and commissions and committees had an opportunity to provide comment. Those comments were compiled and sent to Mass Housing, and then subsequently the project eligibility letter issued. I do think it's important, especially where the board has only referenced one letter, one bit of correspondence received so far tonight from the sewer commission, that the board is generally aware of the comments received from the other boards and commissions and departments and officials of the town a year ago, nine months ago, in response to that, during that comment period, in response to the notice that an application had been filed with Mass Housing. And I say that because there were concerns raised about things like water and sewer. I don't want to get too far down a path, or at least I want to put the notice, the applicant on notice, that the applicant may not want to get too far down a path toward things like traditional engineering reviews, or stormwater reviews, or submittal of a traffic report and peer review of a traffic report if there are preliminary issues that need to be addressed. A couple of members asked about water and sewer and a Plan B. The applicant's response was not a response that they have a Plan B, it was that they would appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. So I do think it makes sense to work through some of those issues early on in the process if it's possible, although that usually wouldn't be the appropriate course. If that is something that the applicant wishes to do to avoid a circumstance where the board is spending time, the applicant is spending money reviewing other components of the project without having addressed these sort of threshold matters about the practical developability of the project as a consequence of availability of water, sewer, things like that. Those were significant topics of discussion in the correspondence that got submitted to Mass Housing. So I just want to put that out there now so it doesn't get forgotten.
Thank you. Do you have any comments?
I'll have a comment on that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. I'm generally in agreement with that approach. I think it's an important issue for the project. I've noticed it seems to be an important issue for some of the board members, as it should be. So I'd like to front-load that issue as well. I don't think it's the only issue that gets front-loaded. There will probably be a couple of highlight issues that we'll pick up. I think we need to hear from all these folks to understand even better what those are. But I think we pick a few of the important, sort of, headline issues, and we focus on those. And the one Adam just mentioned is certainly on my list, it's on his list, I know it's on some of your lists, so I have a feeling that's going to be on the headline issue list by the end of the night.
Makes sense. Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to present tonight?
We're ready to sit and listen.
Sit and listen, okay. With that, I will open it up to the public. Again, if you would like to speak, if you would please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board.
Good evening. I am Michael Ray Jeffries of eleven seventy Massachusetts Avenue, and I'm chairman of the Lunenburg Select Board. I'm here this evening to speak related to this project, so I first must state that as a member of the Select Board, it is important for us to trust in the process. It is clear that the Select Board unanimously opposed this project when it was being presented initially. I do not rise today in opposition, as the Select Board is not taking that position at this time. It is not because we aren't opposed to it, it is simply that we want to make sure that we do not muddy the waters in any kind of way. With that statement, you know, what I, the history here is important because that's what this is about. I understand that tonight, it was mentioned that we had approved by the, by the planning board, a hundred and twenty-unit subdivision. What was carefully excluded from that was there was a ten-year litigation that resulted in approved one hundred and twenty-unit subdivision. What was also not mentioned tonight in the presentation on the process was that this, you know, three and a half miles of water and sewer is very lengthy. And so the applicant, while trying to fund with the one hundred and twenty-unit development, did approach the sewer district. That was not a very successful venture. They also went to the water district, and there was a region-wide vote to expand the water district. That vote was no. And in response, as we are aware, the applicant is litigious, the response was, hey, I'm going to use the laws to my advantage, and so guess what? I'm going to give you a forty-B. And because it's a statewide process, right, that then says, you don't want my one hundred and twenty units, well, I'm going to give you three hundred and twenty units, and I'm going to put a four-story building over there, really just to piss you guys off. Now, that wasn't directly said, but it's pretty clear that that's the intent. So what I want to speak to is a couple of things that I'd ask the board as you go through this process, to be mindful of a few things. So first, I want to comment that I am generally opposed to the forty-B law. And here's why. You know, the intent is, it is so important for people from a variety of socioeconomic backgrounds to live in the same community. It makes communities better. That is not what this is. Forty-B was a law that was created, I believe, now thirty-something years ago, at the time in the eighties, you know, perhaps that formula was good. But today, when you, if you, if I can draw your attention to page A eleven in your booklet here, you have what they're going to charge for rent. A three-bedroom unit, they're going to charge twenty-seven ninety-nine a month for. And the affordable version is twenty-three hundred. Who thinks that's affordable? Even the two, and they're only going to have five affordable three-bedroom units. They're going to have, and the applicant of the fifty-one units, the majority of them are the two-bedroom units. And if you, if, you know, in this industry, in addition to being chairman of the Lunenburg Select Board, I'm also vice president of asset management. I manage property for a living. In our industry, we use a multiplier of thirty-five percent. So your total rental burden should not be more than thirty-five percent of your total gross income. So if you do that math out, I mean, what you're saying is that in affordable unit, you know, we're talking about households that in some cases are making eighty thousand dollars. The application also notes what this is going to cost, and it says this is a sixty-million-dollar project. And then in those numbers, it details that the infrastructure costs are going to be four million. Please tell me how we can put three miles of sewer and water on roads for four million dollars. We can't do that. That's a fictitious number. When you also look at what they're going to say, you know, these, the people living in this development are going to pay for utilities. You know, they have estimates of about a hundred, a two-bedroom unit estimate is like a hundred and seventy-three dollars. I live in a house, there's just two people in my house. I can't get my utility bill below two hundred dollars. We have all the lights off, we don't put outside lights on. I think some of this is wishful thinking on the part of the applicant. And again, you know, this is, this is because we have a legal option here that the applicant is definitely exploiting. You know, we are only about eight or nine units away from being at ten percent affordable in our community, at which point this project would not be before you because our town would be ineligible for this. And so we are only, again, about eight or nine units away from this, and this is a two-hundred-unit proposal. This is all about infrastructure. This is not about providing quality living to new residents in town. This is about a viable process and understanding that since he can't get water and sewer by his own right to his one hundred and twenty units, he's exploiting the forty-B process to try to get water and sewer to that site. And then there, then there will be another request that's going to come down the line of he wants to use that connection to then funnel those hundred and one homes. And if we don't agree to this, as already indicated, we're going back to court. So as you consider this application, I urge you to consider several things. You know, infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. I do not believe that the zoning board of appeals has the authority to decide for the water district. The water district is not technically part of the town of Lunenburg. It is a separate entity that is created by state legislation. We do not have authority over the water district. Now, I understand that there may be some precedent here that, you know, there are some, there are some challenges to this, but again, we challenge the authority of the board, especially as it pertains to the water district. But I also want to clue you in that the applicant has already gone back to the water district and asked for a new vote to allow water to be expanded down to this site, which essentially says to all of us who live in the water district that we will pay for him to self-enrich. The burden of us as members of this community, you know, I think that in this ideal, you know, we're looking for an applicant who's going to be a good community partner, who's going to be here that says, look, I'm trying to provide good housing to people, quality homes to people. That's not what you have here. What we have here is if you don't agree, we're going to sue. We ought not to be afraid of lawsuits. So the other thing here is, you know, as you consider the sightlines, this is not a safe location. I've lived in Lunenburg since I was a child. I'm very familiar with this location. A good friend of mine, Michelle Hire, her family lives directly across the street from this entrance. How are we going to safely get in and out of this development? This is on a corner, it's on, at the top of a hill. This is not a safe, this is not an area of Lunenburg that's densely populated. This is a sparsely populated area that's near, you know, multiple parcels of town forest. So I have concerns about sightlines. I have concerns about the environment, that this also feeds Mulpus Brook, is, comes through this area and feeds over to Hickory Hills. This is an environmentally sensitive area. The Select Board detailed these concerns in the letter to the, to the state. However, we understand that the approval rate of these things is like ninety-six percent, that it's very difficult to deny these based on, but we are concerned about the environmental impact. What are they going to do to ensure that we don't have damage to the residents who live down in Hickory Hills? What are we going to do about the, about the species that live in this area that depend on this? Because again, there's a whole, we have as a municipality, been spending a lot of energy and time over multiple years connecting into the forest system that's in Townsend. And so we have now a pretty good system that goes from the Townsend Forest almost over to Walmart. And what you have here is you have an applicant who's, has already done his clear-cutting, but we are concerned about the environment, so please pay attention to that. In addition to the road traffic and the sightline concerns, concerns about screening. Why does this building need to be four stories tall at the top of a hill? Why does it need to be four stories tall? Are you meaning that he can't achieve this in two stories, more buildings? He can't achieve it in three? I find the four-story proposal to be grossly offensive to the residents who live in this area, to the nature of our community. This is not appropriate. And then the impact on schools. You know, we want to make sure that we are, that we're developing our community in an effective way that allows all residents to have the best opportunities for themselves and their families. What is the impact on everyone when you provide two hundred rental units to our community? Presumably, they're going to appeal to families. We cannot absorb that. Quite simply, we can't absorb it. Now, I understand that that may not be one of the considerations that you have here today, that you can't really look into the impact on the schools, that that's not part of this process. But again, I would urge you to really start sinking into these details as they're presented in this report. With that said, I, as an individual, am adamantly opposed to this project. I think no one will stand up tonight and say that this is an interesting project to them, that this will increase the value of their neighborhood, that this is, that in any way that this is a great thing. And no one's going to say that Mr. O'Brien has done anything to identify that he's going to be a good public citizen for the residents of Lunenburg. I urge your criticism of this, and if necessary, your denial. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Board members, thank you for doing this tonight and have a public meeting. My name is Dave McDonald. I'm the, one second. I'm on the Lunenburg Sewer Commission. I want to thank you for reading our statement at the beginning of the meeting. We really appreciate that. We do have concerns. We've been working on this as a sewer commission for over a year. As Mr. Costas said, we supplied all our information back a year ago, and we're here again tonight. I know this is the start of a long journey, so we're with you on this journey. Some of our concerns is that, one, the project is located outside our sewer district. That being said, right now, we have to take a vote for every time you want to go outside the sewer district. We feel that this is required by town vote, not by overriding on the bylaws. Second one would be that if they connect to Fitchburg Line, the Fitchburg is designed for minimum capacity, which we're at now, or already has been allocated, so going to Fitchburg would be impossible. The other thing is the flows via the Lemmerson Line is the preferred for the capacity. The abilities for the existing pump stations along the Lemmerson Line to handle the proposed flow must be evaluated, and the system must be designed capable with the Lunenburg sewer system for the build-out. There are connection fees of the Lunenburg sewer division that's required to be paid to the cities, the flow and far as with our IMAs. These connection charges in the Lunenburg sewer connection can cover the costs and the maintenance of the operational costs. Therefore, these fees should not be waived at all. Lemmerson and Fitchburg must approve the, this project for the MIAs for the towns, which means we have to send letters out to Fitchburg and Lemmerson, make them aware what's going on, and that the capacity could be changing. Peer review is also proposed. The sewer and associates, apprentices will be required for the project. The sewer and associates, apprentices will be required for the project. Associated costs must be borne by the applicant. A resident engineer work for the town agent would be required, again, should be picked up by the applicant. Town went to a substantial expense to have the comprehensive wastewater plan, as known as the CWMP, compiled in 2010 and updated in 2016. Neither of these plans found the areas a proposed project has located an area of need. This project that they propose is not in the area of need. The design on Pondview Commons Project should incorporate the ability for the properties along the sewer line to connect. It would be awful if they were connected and without letting anybody else be connected to that sewer line. Lunenburg Sewer Connection Fees is not considered the applicant's. And I gave you guys, you have a letter of a chart, which is, to me, is more important than what I'm explaining now. Lunenburg must reserve capacity, Lemmister must reserve capacity for the parcels where it's assessed and are paying and/or have paid sewer benefits. As noted, the applicant on page A15-A17, true costs and connection lines, sewer are not accurate. Now, that was done, I guess, a year, year and a half ago, so I'm sure they're gonna be coming back and upgrading those. But based on the numbers that they gave, there is no way near enough money in there for that. And if you go to the chart that we have, and by the way, if residents want to see this, they'll be able to get it online at the Sewer Department or the DPW will make this accessible. But right now, they have $4 million. This item doesn't separate the water from the sewer costs. That's one number they put in, and we know it's not gonna come anywhere near that. The inspection, the other consultants, as noted on number eight, pay reviews in the sewer design must be, eliminate costs must be insufficient. Bottom line is, if you take a look on the last one, this is the one that we're very concerned about, and again, if you can look at this at home, that is all the connection fees that they're looking to waive. Now, if you look at the bottom line, we're at $2 million. If this goes through, if you pass this, this would wipe out the Sewer Department as it's known today. That's our reserve capacity now. You are putting a heavy, heavy burden on all the citizens of Lunenburg. We urge you to take a look at this and deny it just for that. I don't think anyone's looking to put a commission or department out of business, but that's what it will do. So if you have any questions, and again, Mr. Costas, I know we're gonna be working on this a long time, but we're available at the Sewer Commission if anybody wants to come. And we want to thank you. Yep?
What was your address, please?
I'm at 155 Island Road, Lunenburg.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Can I just, so if you were, you as the sewer commission was expanding, let's say, down road, let's say 10 houses?
Yep.
And there were a couple people on that line that didn't want to connect, what happens to that? They still get assessed a fee, right?
Yes, they get a benefit fee.
Even though they don't want it?
That's correct.
Okay.
But it does better their property.
It does better their property, but they have the ability to connect to it?
Yes.
Correct? By law? If that line goes by them, they can connect into it?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, you can imagine if you run three miles of line, not only you have a sewer capacity to take the project, but now you also have the houses that are, it's passing by, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Any other questions? Yes.
So just for clarification, if the line goes by the house, then a betterment, according to our sewer bylaws, a betterment must be assessed?
It would be on this one here, since it's done by a private, it'd be a privilege fee. So it wouldn't be a betterment, it would be a privilege fee.
So it'd be a privilege, but every homeowner that it passed by would have to have some kind of fee?
Could, if it's approved that way. If it's not, we have a line in Lunenburg now that goes directly from the center of town to the trailer park, and that goes by a lot of houses on F. But we can't tie into it.
Okay. I just wanted, that's what I was asking.
And that's what we're afraid about as far as business too. If we're gonna do it, let's do it for all the citizens of Lunenburg, not just, not just one development. So our position is, do it the right way. But if you start putting waivers in, you're gonna deficit all the other people in town, and it's just not fair, it's not right. And that's why I'm here tonight. You know, whatever you want to do, you want to do it fair and by the law, but not be forced. That's awful to be forced. But thank you for your questions.
Question. So you mentioned that it's a private line and it's a privilege fee, right?
Well, not the Meadowbrook, that's just a straight line, we have nothing.
But we're going back to the?
Yes.
This one here. So it's a privilege fee, right? So I understand the benefit fee goes to the town. Where does the money from the privilege fee go?
Anytime a town gets connected, it goes back to Lemmister with connection fees and for miscellaneous fees that we have in the operation of the business.
So it goes back to the town, then?
Goes back to the town.
Okay.
But it also goes to maintaining the pumps. In this one here, the engineering, he had, again, we haven't seen the final engineering yet, so we don't know if there're gonna be more pump stations, who maintains them, who's gonna be taking care of that? And this is all part of the town, we have to absorb that, or there's still more discussion than it works. But it costs a lot of money to do a pump station, by the way.
Thank you.
And generators too.
Can you tell us what's the longest line you have in town? Do you know mileage-wise what that is?
You know, I think the one that we have is down Mass Ave that goes over through Whalen up to Lemmister. The Fitchburg Line, basically, it just goes down from Walmart down to some areas up in that area. Everything else gets pumped over to Lemmister. And the other thing we have a problem, I mean, you gotta look at, is INI, which is a big problem right now with water in the lines. So whatever we do, we want to make sure it's done properly.
So what's the distance of a line from the center of town, the private line from the center of town to the trailer park?
What was the cost of that?
No, what was the distance?
I want to say it's about mile and a half. Hold on, Barbara's here. Barbara, what's the, two miles maybe? About that far?
About, even if you're saying a mile, mile and a half.
Yeah, and again, that was done on an emergency basis that.
Yeah. Maybe not.
Yeah, we do too.
I have one more question regarding stormwater runoff to the sewer lines. How does that, how do you guys manage that or control that?
That's called INI. Now, a lot of time, in fact, if you go through Fitchburg, you'll see they're separating their sewer from water, and that's been done for a long time. That has to be, before, it used to go into one pipe. Fitchburg, we have a closed seal system with Channel 40 pipe. I don't know if you ever saw that. But if there's a leak in there or manhole covers, we call that INI. Water gets into the system. And our monies get paid to Lemmister and Fitchburg by flows, not by metering. It goes by flow. So if you have a lot of leaks in your line, we pay for all that water going through Lemmister and Fitchburg, which we're working on every day. That's been a problem for 20 years. But again, I want to thank you guys for hearing this, and I know you guys got a long road ahead of you. And again, if there's anything else that the Sewer Department can do, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Anyone else that would like to speak?
The microphone's on.
Yeah.
You have to come up forward.
You have to come up to me.
Can you guys speak? Speaking to the microphone, 75, it might be a little hard to hear everybody. I missed a few words.
Okay.
Okay. So you just want everyone to speak louder, is that what you're saying?
Well, speaking to the mic.
It's not amplified within the room, correct? Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I don't believe, I don't really.
I don't believe there's any amplification within the room.
No, I don't believe there is an implication. Yeah, he's correct. So we'll speak up, or everybody can speak up.
You need to put your hands up because when you speak, we can't hear you. It's very muffled.
Okay. We'll try to speak up. Anybody else from the public would like to speak tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Rest of the ZBA, everybody in attendance. My name is Tom Alonso, 284 Lancaster Avenue, also vice chair of the Lunenburg Select Board, although I'm here as a citizen tonight. I just want to read briefly from a letter that I sent in response to the initial application to mass housing for this project, and I think it underlines what I think is the most severe case and the item that probably the ZBA can attach to most when evaluating this. And I think it's of the most serious concern to the entire town as a whole. Mr. Jeffries touched on a lot of other things to which I agree, and over the course of your hearings, I probably will comment on, but this one, I think, is the most important. And so I just want to read into this. "In Lunenburg, we understand and support the state's position on affordable housing and take seriously our role in wanting to maintain our fair share of it within our borders. We have had several such projects proposed and built here to address that need. Most recently, the third building of Trittown Landing was built, adding an additional 70 affordable housing units in the past year alone. We have had 40B projects proposed and built here without objection. As of this writing," and this was back in August of last year, "our housing percentage of affordable housing was at 9.5%. It was just short of the 10% that would provide us the safe harbor rule that would have precluded us having to hear this 40B project. And at that time, that 0.5% equated to 18 units. We were 18 units short of our 10%. So again, we have taken our commitment to provide affordable housing seriously. In this case before you, however, I believe the application now is relying upon decision-making powers and authority that far outreach the current 40B legislation. The very powers and authorities that, if allowed, would strip the town, its voters, and citizens of foundational principles upon which every municipality must rely in order to secure its environmental, educational, and financial future." From the Housing, from the 40B Handbook for Zoning Boards of Appeal of March 2017, that's the latest one, I think, that's published, it states the following. It says, "General law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, known as Chapter 40B or the Comprehensive Permit Law, is a state law that was enacted in 1969 to facilitate construction of low or moderate income housing. It establishes a consolidated local review and approval process, known as Comprehensive Permit, that empowers the Zoning Board of Appeals in each city and town to hold hearings and make binding decisions that encompass all local ordinances and bylaws and regulations. That objective is accomplished with a consolidated permitting process that gives a ZBA authority to waive zoning and other local requirements that would impede the creation of low and moderate income housing. Chapter 40B promotes regional distribution of low or moderate income housing by preventing individual cities and towns from blocking it with exclusionary zoning." As a side note, that exclusionary zoning became known, the 40B became known as the anti-snob law, and that was the basic principle that formulated its establishment. Under 40B, the ZBA has authority to grant all the approvals that would otherwise trigger separate applications under local bylaws or ordinances. The ZBA also has authority to grant waivers of local requirements if requested by the developer and necessary to construct the proposed project. The ZBA's mechanism for taking these actions is a single, comprehensive, all-encompassing permit, the purpose of which is to expedite the approval process and facilitate construction of low or moderate income housing. The ZBA's jurisdiction includes zoning, subdivision regulations, and other types of local bylaws or ordinances and regulations, e.g., local historic district bylaws, earth removal, stormwater management, or other local wetland regulations. Of course, state regulations, as was noted earlier by town council, are excluded from that. As outlined in the above passages, the legislation vested in the ZBA for the purposes of expediency and streamlined permitting the powers of most every board, commission, or committee in the municipality. Therefore, it's a one-stop-shopping permit. Whatever each of these local individual municipal bodies could do, so could the ZBA under 40B. From its inception, the powers afforded to ZBA, and the Housing Appeals Committee for that matter, under the 40B legislation have expanded significantly, allowing ever more capability into what municipal rules, regulations, procedures, and bylaws could be waived, ignored, or modified, just so projects could move ahead. Each of these expansions, however, were still rooted in the administration of those bylaws, regulations, and ordinances, all functions of an executive body, not a legislative one. So all the committees and commissions that this board now has authority over, instead of going to multiple permits, are vested here, but those are all executive body bodies. They're not legislative bodies. The 40B project application of Pondview Commons LLC puts before us is predicated on both wastewater and water infrastructure being installed along 3.5 or so miles of roadway from their nearest points in town to the project site. Both of these projects would expand individually the sewer and water districts, districts whose modifications, whose additions, subtractions, et cetera, require the approval of town meeting for the sewer district and the voters of the Lunenburg Water District for the Water District, respectively. Both of those bodies are legislative in nature, not executive, and are at the heart of municipality's ability to plan for its future, be stewards of its environmental resources, and to fairly and reasonably assess its ongoing financial responsibilities and projections. While the 40B legislation governing projects like this clearly were instituted to counter stringent zoning laws and other ordinances that towns and cities pass to prevent or preclude affordable housing within their borders, the same 40B legislation couldn't have envisioned giving the ZBA legislative authority too. If that were the case, the power and the authority of the ZBA within the 40B and the 40B authority, per se, would essentially be limitless. They could do anything they wanted. I don't believe that was its intention. Just as state environmental laws and the state's Title V requirements are beyond the reach of the ZBA under 40B, so I assert is the legislative powers of the municipalities, especially but not limited to those concerning sensitive environmental issues such as water supplies and wastewater treatment and flows. The aforementioned water district and sewer districts have been defined, modified, and managed over decades with careful attention to natural resources within the town and with great regard for their proper use, replenishment, and overall health. A great deal of money has been spent on environmental studies by both the Lunenburg Water District and the town of Lunenburg to assess how best to utilize and protect and sustain those natural resources, many times in conjunction with state and/or federal agencies such as Mass DEP. Those studies were broad and took countless hours so that proper decisions could be made by the voters of Lunenburg in planning how best and when to use those resources and where. Usurping the powers of those legislative bodies would completely undermine the bedrock principles of town planning, budget forecasting, and the notion of a municipality's self-determination. So I don't believe such authority and power exists within the current 40B legislation, and without it, I don't think this project could possibly be approved without that. I know that the proponents, councilors, say they have arguments to this. I'd love to hear them, but from what I've read and researched on my own, I don't see that it does, and it would essentially undermine everything that the town could do to basically determine its own future in ways far beyond zoning laws. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Reni Shattuck, 396 Howard Street for 51 years, and, incidentally, directly between 390 and 400 Howard Street. During that time, I've watched Howard Street evolve from an oil and sand-paved street in the summertime to one with a snow fence to stop drifting in the winter, to a paved country road now. The number of houses has nearly tripled since 1972, and the traffic has increased dramatically, making Howard Street very snug in some places when two vehicles pass each other. Trailer trucks and large gravel trucks now travel Howard Street frequently, loudly and sometimes with difficulty because of the narrowness. Winter, of course, narrows the street even more with snowbanks. Until recently, Howard Street has been able to maintain its country road image. Now it has become a sort of semi-main thoroughfare with difficulties. It still has only a country road infrastructure. The intended development of a former chicken farm will add 200 units of housing and potentially more than 200 vehicles. Construction will necessitate more large trucks and trailer trucks for a prolonged period. There will be more service vehicles and delivery trucks. The developer The developer now owns approximately 200 acres of land on Howard Street, but oddly uses only one spot of land, a 30-yard strip of frontage, to fit a maintenance, or a main entrance road sited between two private driveways and is presently blocked, that's the main entrance road, by a utility pole, which obviously will have to be moved if the road is opened. On the opposite side from the proposed main entrance is another private driveway, and for good measure, the street in the middle of these driveways and entrance is a school bus stop. This particular spot on Howard Street will be a disaster waiting to happen. Before any decisions are made about the proposed main entrance, I invite all townspeople to view this particular 30-yard strip. Howard Street cannot sustain a large increase of traffic and noise with its insufficient infrastructure and still maintain its country charm. It will be a safe, it will not be a safe area for pedestrians. There are no sidewalks or vehicular traffic. In closing, what rights or voice do neighbors have in determining the future of the neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
My name is Donna Jacobson. I live on 189 Howard Street. Can you hear me? Okay.
I think you gotta speak up, though, for the rest of them.
Okay. I moved to Lunenburg when I was 25. It was my husband and my dream to live on a farm and raise our children in the country. We are landlords. We do rent to low-income housing, and our three families go for, our three bedrooms are like $1,000. You know, that's low income. So I, I know that $2700 is not anything that any of my tenants could afford a month. We're with Farmers Home Administration, with the government on the farm, and we've been there since 1982, and it's been pretty difficult doing the farming there. We used to have the pumpkin patch with horse-tron hayrides, pony rides, and having different, our neighbors really did not like us because we were farmers, but we are in a right-to-farm community, and I thank, I thank Lunenburg for giving me that right to farm. And he has bought an arrow's farm, and we were excited. And when I, when he, when I found out he was putting in 130 houses there, I asked him if he wanted to buy my property, because I don't think I can farm with that many, and he says, "No, your farm is going to attract my customers." And you don't know how difficult it is to get people in the city to live near a farm. It looks beautiful in pictures. It looks great, but in reality, there's many neighbors who have disliked me over the years. And so through that, we ended up closing the farm, and I couldn't stay there, I, you know, but we want a farm. And then we ended up doing a daycare there, and it was great, because the kids could see the animals, and it's great for people, for the kids, and, you know, so the farm is great for, for everybody, but it's really difficult when you're trying to make a living with a farm, and people walk by with their dogs, your animals want to get out, chase their dogs or chase them, and you're constantly trying to keep your animals in. It's really difficult with so many neighbors wanting to walk by to see the animals. It is nice, but it's difficult as a farmer to have all those kind of neighbors walking by your house. And I'm sure with 200, you know, with that many people, they're going to have dogs and gonna walk by, wanna walk by the, the farm. You know, I wouldn't mind, we, we do foster care now, and we, we have adult people with disabilities that live with us, and there are no services that come all the way out here for buses to pick them up, because we're out of the range of, you know, where they can come pick up the people with disabilities. So, well, I guess they're not really low income. They probably won't need those services of the buses going over there if it's, if they can afford that kind of rent. So I wouldn't call it low-income housing. You know, I wouldn't mind putting in 18 units in my house and having disabled people, because they love the farm more than anybody else, you know? You know, I just am thankful that Lunenburg has the right to farm, and, you know, I hate to not be able to do farming. We've been here since 1982, and, you know, I couldn't put the farm in Fitchburg, but I could put 200 acres in, I mean, 200 houses in Fitchburg. So I just don't think it's fair that they're going to put 200 housing, 200 houses, I mean, apartments, where people can walk by my farm and just, it's just, you know, something that I don't think is fair.
Okay.
I don't know what else to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Ladies and gentlemen, how are you doing, Mr. Chairman?
Speak up, please.
Name and address, please. Your name and address, please.
My name is Dennis Winkie, and I live at 326 Howard Street. Okay. Most of you know what strip mining is. Now, strip, for those of you that don't know, strip mining is a mineral extraction process in which a layer or seam of undesired material called overburden is removed from the surface and an area to allow efficient access to a desired material existing beneath that layer being stripped. As the process suggests, it is a form of surface mining, and it is primarily used to extract material that lays relatively close to the surface. Now, I'm getting to the point. There are two types of strip mining approaches. The first and most common approach is referred to as area mining. It is used on fairly flat terrain and involves the removal of long strips, potentially hundreds of yards at once. Now, the Pondview Commons project, as it now stands, in many ways reflects the same environmental impact and devastation as a strip mining project. Now, strip mining, as you know, is only a temporary use of the land, so it is imperative to restore the land as soon as the mining is over to save the land. The reclamation of mined land must be decided in terms of local, physical, and socioeconomic Now, this individual, this man, is not a strip miner, but he is a real estate developer, and as such bears the responsibility to the town of Lunenburg and to its residents to consider the interest in maintaining the rural character of this town, or at least consider the interests of the people most affected by this project. Okay? At the very least, he has a moral responsibility to restore this piece of property to what it originally, what it was originally, in terms of replacing the topsoil, planting trees, and in general, make it habitable for humans and wildlife. Now, he has bulldozed trees, okay, the trees that were on the land originally, and pushed them right to the end of the properties. They're hidden, but I've got, I'm sending pictures around now so that you can actually see what was done. And the topsoil was removed and put into big mounds, okay? These are the things that were done. And I might add that the dust from this property, because all the topsoil's been removed, is blowing around to the point where a lot of people in the area are having respiratory issues. And also, the well water for some people in the area has been affected by the silt. Okay? These are all different things that have happened. So, now, let me just say this. He has proven thusly, he is a businessman ought to make money, which in and of itself is not especially a bad thing, but he's doing this at the expense of the residents of the Town of Lunenburg. The many residents, the many reasons why this project was unfeasible from the beginning were so eloquently laid out by the Town of Lunenburg Select Board chaired by Tom Alonso. The letter was written to the attention of Michael J. Busby, Relationship Manager, Planning and Programs, on September 2, 2021. In addition to the town officials at that time who responded to these concerns, it is relevant that the Select Board received 22 letters from residents who were forwarded to Mr. Busby along with this mailing. Now, all I ask is that you take this under consideration. I realize that this letter was written over a year ago, but the, but the points that were mentioned in this letter are still valid. Okay? That's, that's all I have to say, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dave Rogers. I live at 82 Highland Street. I'm here this evening as an individual. However, 40 years of volunteerism was devoted to the Lunenburg Water District, so I do have a smattering of information relative to the water in this town. The developer, Mr. O'Brien, made a few statements in his application, like it were fait accompli. It was happening. Like, "The infrastructure will be used by him to provide sewer and water," and that's not true. As mentioned earlier, the applicant asked for and was granted a vote before the district, and it was unanimously defeated that the district was not going to expand the bounds. And yet, the way you read this application, it's like he's going to be doing this and be doing that. Now, I, I'm not going to take any more time than necessary, because there's a, there's a whole bunch of meetings, I'm sure, planned, and I'll, I'll insert my two cents' worth at that particular time. But if somebody asks you what's, what the crux of this particular proposal is, it's not to help those who really need and want affordable housing. It's not. It's to feather the nest of the developer. Some $4 million he will receive, plus, plus, plus. And can you imagine he's also proposing that there be a charge for pets and for parking? Really? It's, this is riddled with, with unbelievable statements and positions that really are not true. So I'll leave it at that, and you will see me again sometime. I hope not at the North Cemetery, but my Howie missum. And I, I will, I will come forth as I encourage everybody to do. This is one of the most important situations facing the Town of Lunenburg, and I, I implore you, think long and hard, and at the end, vote no. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you at the North.
Would anybody else from the public like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Murphy, 138 Howard Street. My driveway is directly across the street from her farm, and I moved to this town, probably the newest resident of Howard Street, about nine months ago. Bought it in the middle of nowhere, the woods. But as I stand at the bottom of my driveway, my daughter has to cross the road to get on the bus. I currently fear for her safety, because the speed that people come down that hill is, I'd say, 50 to 60 miles an hour, and in front of the farm, it's 25 mile an hour zone. So for animals, for children, I fear for their safety. I can't imagine my kids riding their bikes on Howard Street with 200, 300 more homes. So I'm against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
My name is John Alatolo, 244 Howard Street, Lunenburg, Mass. Like rainy, I've been there a long time, but I've been there since 1947, 75 years. So I've seen this property as youth, hunt, play, everything out there, and now it's stripped bare. There's no place for the water to go but runoff down the street. Typically, last October, there was a rainstorm, a heavy rain. The water ran down, was coming out of his property at Howard Street, maybe six inches deep, ran down the hill towards where Lottie's tree farm was, and it ran the other way, too, towards my property. Next day, I went out in the woods, in the forest, and I could see all the green vegetation was flattened out on my side of the street. This is the easterly side. Then I went down to the westerly side, and all the silt had washed into Eric Lottie's pond, which is in Fitchburg. He hasn't managed his property at all. It's just a disgrace. And I'd like the board here to really vote no on this project. It's a disaster. Thank you.
Anybody, anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Jackie DeBetoncourt. I'm from 437 Howard Street. And I just wanted to mention that I'm looking through this proposal as both a resident of the community, but also a parent, and I can say that as my kids started school a few years ago, I have one in the primary school now, one in Turkey Hill, I recall them scrambling to find a teacher for the first grade class that had grown immensely until right before the beginning of school. This year, there was a lot of conversation about buses and how a lot of people were wait-listed for the buses, and a lot of that was driven by the fact that there aren't a lot of sidewalks, and, you know, people who were within a mile of the school were allegedly supposed to walk or something to that effect. However, I just feel like this is going to have a ripple effect. And I have been married to a firefighter for over 10 years for the Town of Harvard. He knows a lot about towns and infrastructures and things of that nature, and I'm curious as to whether this community can support this growth from a fire department, first responder, and police department perspective. It's a lot of new people coming into the area. It's a lot of new buildings to work with, and I'm just curious as to what's going to happen for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna cut off public discussion, bring it back to the board. And I think we'd like to come up with some sort of plan as we're moving forward. The next hearing, I'd like to set a date and time. As, as Mr. Costa suggested about the water and sewer, I know you want to put that as a priority, so I guess I'd like to know where you would like to go with that, and... So I guess I'd like to know where you would like to go with that and know what you would like to, you know, do at the next hearing, which one you'd like.
One second, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to consult my client very quickly.
Do you have any suggestions on how we approach now?
Yeah, we're going to start preparing for peer review. So we should talk about that.
And again, we need to talk about the peer review, is Mr. Costa.
Yeah, so I would like to talk about the board's interest in peer review for that next meeting. We heard several, at least what I heard in summary, at least some of the issues designed in criticism of the project, not strictly designed at requesting the board to say no to the project. So if I focus on the criticism of the project that we've received so far tonight and some of the questions I've got from the board, it sounds like traffic is a high-level issue. So I would propose for the next meeting that we cover both sewer and water. We'll talk some, in some more detail about the, about the thought process and the plans and the conceptual design that we have for accessing sewer and water in a little more detail than we did tonight, which was very little detail. And two, that we also talk about the authority that we think this board has to allow for sewer and water to serve the project. And then I think we could also at least start to cover traffic for that next session. And what I'd suggest is that we submit our traffic study in advance of that session, at least have the board and members of the public have a chance to digest that traffic study, and we could discuss that study at the, at the next meeting. Now, I don't know if that means we would necessarily be teed up for that meeting to have peer review of that traffic study, or if it's going to be necessary. So what I'd actually suggest is we file our report, you review it, it's open to the public for review, and we discuss that report, and then we could talk about traffic peer review if that was necessary at that time.
Okay. You agree with that?
So, Mr. Chair, you know, I can tell you knowing a bit about, and you heard some from, from members of the Select Board and residents tonight, concerns relating to water and sewer. I don't know if the board has received any feedback from, from the Water District. I know that the Water District did provide some correspondence in the context of the mass housing application that was made. Certainly, I suspect that that is a topic that could take the better part of, at least of one meeting in and of itself. I have no objection from a procedural perspective with the applicant submitting a traffic report for initial review by the board. I wouldn't necessarily recommend that there be a full-scale presentation of traffic by the applicant's consultant at a meeting before it's been peer reviewed. I think it's helpful to have the peer review completed and have that presentation made with the peer review consultant in attendance so that there can be some, some immediate response to that. And very often, the consultants, if authorized by the board, will work together, one-on-one, to try to address any issues that might exist with respect to peer review comments. But I don't have any objection to that. I will, I will say that I think it might be helpful, and I don't want to speak for the board, but if the board has concerns about water and sewer, based upon the information that's in the record so far, comments that have been made, to not only get some feedback from the applicant and the applicant's counsel verbally at the next meeting, but to receive something in writing in advance. If I'm going to be looked to for an opinion, I don't think it'll be a surprise that the applicant to town looked to me even before this ZBA process began for an opinion. I put that opinion in writing. I made a submittal on behalf of the town to mass housing. So my cards are on the table in terms of where I stand legally, my opinion concerning water and sewer capacity, access to water and sewer. It would be helpful to see laid out the applicant's position on why it disagrees with that legal analysis, why it believes it has access to water and sewer, why it believes this board has the authority to grant that access or, or grant capacity in those systems. So the more that we can get in advance of meetings, the better prepared that I think the board can be to respond substantively at the meetings.
Right. When would you be prepared to give, prepare that and submit that?
Yeah, so I think we'd want about two weeks to submit a written response, and I'm familiar with Attorney Costa's letter. I'll note for the board that all of the objections, and there were many of them, to this project that was submitted to mass housing before mass housing approved the site eligibility for the project are all in your package. So there is a tab consisting of everything that was filed in opposition to the, to the project of mass housing. We thought it was important to include it for you. It's also part of your filings, so you have that in front of you. I'd want about two weeks to respond back in writing to Attorney Costa. I can lay out our position on the board's authority on sewer and water. I do have some requests related to that. One is there's been a sewer commission memo that's been discussed tonight. The applicant team has not been provided with a copy of that. We would appreciate a copy of the memo that was discussed tonight and partially presented by a member of the sewer commission. It'd be nice for the applicant to see what the sewer commission has to say. I'd also note that, and I guess I'm not going to, tonight is not the night to discuss that. We're teeing up a meeting for that. But I do want to read just one section of the 40B regulations. It's the definition of local board. So the reason we're all here tonight, and I think everyone now understands it, and Attorney Costa gave a great explanation of it, which is this board has authority to basically take on the roles of all the other local boards. So it's important to know what is a local board. The term local board is defined under the Comprehensive Permit Regulations, that's 760 CMR 56.02, for people who like to read it. Definition of local board means any local board or official, including but not limited to any board of survey, board of health, planning board, conservation commission, historical commission, water, sewer, or other commission or district, fire, police, traffic, or other department, building inspector, or similar official or board, city council, or board of selectmen. All boards, regardless of their geographical jurisdiction or their sources of authority, and this is an important and right on point with many comments tonight, and then in parentheses it says, "that is, including boards created by special acts of the legislature or by other legislative action," end of parentheses, "shall be deemed local boards if they perform functions usually performed by locally created boards." So we've heard several times tonight that the Water District is not technically part of the municipality, the sewer commission is not technically controlled by anything other than the legislative town meeting, but I would say the commission, the Comprehensive Permit Regulations clearly make those sort of key municipal functions, providing public infrastructure, public utilities, water and sewer, because they happen to be housed in a district or a commission that's enabled by special legislation, is specifically a local board as defined by the Comp Permit Regulation. So I don't want to think, I don't want you to think I'm playing hide the ball on that. So I start there. There's other law that supports our position, but it's important, and it's, it's a basic item laid out in the Comp Permit Regulations. Everybody should be aware of it. So when we're talking about those important issues, we start from the same page. And we'll get into a lot more detail of it with Attorney Costa and the board for the next session. And I'd like two weeks to provide that writing, and then we'll, we'll schedule a meeting somewhere around a month out from now? Is that, is that what you're thinking, Mr. Chair?
Well, I'm thinking our next hearing date that we're open is the 28th, and we have already have hearings that night. So I think the next hearing after that, would somebody look, I think it would probably be October 12th, maybe?
I think that's correct.
And that would give him two weeks to-
Right. And you could get that information in. We're also waiting for peer review from a lot of the other departments. We haven't got a lot back yet, but I believe they still have two and a half or three weeks left to submit their comments to us. So we would like to gather all of that before you, you come back for us anyway. So I'm thinking the next hearing date would be, is it correct, the 12th?
October 12th.
October 12th at 7:00.
That looks fine by the applicant team, Mr. Chair. I would ask that as the, I'd like to know what the best method for us is to obtain those sorts of documents as they come into the town, whether there's a central repository, whether we should contact the board secretary. What's the best way?
I think Lisa Armadon, the board secretary, if you would submit it all to her, then she would distribute it.
My experience with her is she's excellent and on the ball, so I'm happy to, I'm happy to be in contact with her to obtain those documents.
Okay. Anything else we should wrap up?
No other things to add today.
Okay.
Just to recap our marching orders for that October 12th meeting, two weeks from now, I would have submitted written documentation to Attorney Costa that lays out our position as far as the board's authority on water and sewer. We'll also submit a traffic report, and at the October 12th meeting, we'll focus mainly on water and sewer, but we'll also get some feedback, at least initial feedback, on the traffic report that we had submitted between now and then.
Okay.
And discuss peer review at that meeting.
We'll look at that. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with that done, I think you have the information. I would encourage all of the neighbors to continue to come to the hearings. If you can't come, watch the hearings on Lunenburg Public Access. Please feel free to come. We will open it to the public. You can say what, you know, your thoughts, your concerns. So as these different traffic comes up, water, sewer, density, all of these environmental issues, all of these things, please feel free to come back and, and voice all your concerns. With that-
Mr. Chair, if I could just add one thing for the members of the public who might not be familiar with the procedure. So you won't get further notice in the mail. I presume that those of you who are abutters or abutters to abutters receive mail notice of tonight's public hearing. You won't get continued notice of future hearings. This hearing is continued from time to time. The board has the obligation at the conclusion of each session to announce the date and the time to which it's continuing it and the location, which will, I presume, be in the same meeting room.
Correct.
But you won't receive further notice in the mail. So just make note or tell others who might be interested, they won't receive further notice either.
I don't think anybody receives the notice, except the ones that I and my husband.
Okay. Well, you certainly, you certainly wouldn't, even if you had, you wouldn't receive notice of further, further continuances.
Can you put a bigger ad in the paper instead of that little three-by-five ad? My God, can't the town afford that even?
I, I don't know what they put. I know they put an ad. We have to post it. It's also, it's also posted out here and up-
I get the Sentinel, which is useless.
Right.
The ad is so small, and the print was so bad. My God.
Need to talk to the ledger about that.
I think that's because it went to the Sentinel under timeless constraint versus the normal where they put it in the Lunenburg paper. But again, as, as Mr. Costa stated, it won't be, there won't be any notices. So that's why I was telling you, keep in contact, so you know, like we announced tonight.
October 12th.
Correct. October 12th, 7 o'clock. From that hearing, at the end of that hearing, when we schedule another one, we'll give you a date and a time so that you can keep following all of the hearings. Okay, with that, I think we're done for tonight.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I'll second that.
And with that, I'll call for a roll call.
Aye.
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 And aye. And so with that, tonight's hearing is adjourned. We thank you. Thank you for coming.
Start by, first of the week, you see Lisa?
Um, yeah, you can, or I can give it to her. I got to go back and give her a key anyway.